Good evening. I call to order this regular meeting of the Scottsdale Unified School District. It is Tuesday, March 19th, and the time is 5:31 PM. Welcome back from spring break. Please stand. Board Member Beckham will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will have a roll call, starting from my far right.
Jan Michael Greenberg.
Sandy Kravitz.
Barbara Perleberg.
Allison Beckham.
Katty Beckman. All board members are present, and we do have a quorum. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Or amended?
I would like to amend the agenda. I would like to pull from consent agenda item S, please.
Are there others?
Are there others?
I believe there were.
Board Member Greenberg, oh, I'm sorry.
I would like to pull consent agenda item N.
Okay. Agenda item N is being tabled for future discussion.
Okay. Perfect.
At a different time.
I guess that was my point, is you should, at this point, say.
Any further items? Board Member Beckham.
Yes, I'd like to pull item O and item R.
Consent agenda item N is being tabled for future discussion. Board Member Kravitz has asked for item S to be pulled, and Board Member Beckham has asked for item O and R. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda without consent agenda items N, which has been tabled? O, the approval of procurement of Chromebook purchase; R, Phase 1 authorization of expenditures, Climattec digital control systems; and S, approval of K-8 Avid advancement via individual determination programs.
So moved.
Board Member Greenberg seconds, or moves, I'm sorry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is approved. We now ask Dr. Krieger to present the student and staff recognitions and celebrations.
Thank you. President Beckman, members of the board, thank you very much. We have some, a few celebrations to share this evening, and I would like to begin with Dr. Hagigot, our Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education, to get us started.
Good afternoon, President Beckman, governing board members, Dr. Krieger, and Sandra. Today, I would like to tell you about one of our elementary school principals, who is a finalist for the annual Maricopa School Superintendent Exemplary Program. I'd like to welcome Tamara Jagidzinski up to the podium with me, please.
Let me share with you that each year, County School Superintendent Steve Watson recognizes eight principals from around Maricopa for being school leaders who support and empower teachers to provide excellent education opportunities for students. They must exemplify practices in leadership that contributes to improve student learning, involve staff, parent, and community members in developing an effective school culture, and their school must have a history of high teacher retention. To my mind, this is the very definition of Mrs. Jagidzinski. The six-phase application and review process is exhaustive and includes research of the school's last three years of achievement data, evidence of a strong student and community-centered culture, and a survey of school staff. The closing phases are underway, but to be honest, while this would be a great honor for Mrs. Jagidzinski to receive, we already know that she is an exemplary principal here at the Scottsdale Unified School District, so I'd like you to join me in congratulating her for being a finalist. Congratulations.
Good evening, President Beckman, members of the board, Dr. Krieger, and Sandra. I would like to ask the dynamic principal of Kokopah Middle School to come forward, Mr. Nick Noonan. The Arizona Department of Education annually recognizes schools that have made a determined effort to prepare their students to achieve and be responsible citizens. The mission of ADEs, which is Arizona Civic Engagement Program, is to support and recognize schools that promote an environment of culture in which students are made aware of, provided opportunities for, and equipped with the tools of civil learning, engagement, and appreciation of the democratic processes, liberties, and responsibilities. Our Kokopah Middle School is such a school. Over the last three years, Kokopah has elevated its recognition status in the Civic Engagement Program, starting with School of Merit in 2015-16, a School of Distinction in 2016-17, and earlier this month, ready for it? The top classification, 2017-18 Civic Engagement School of Excellence. Kokopah is one of eight Arizona schools that has received this distinction. Mr. Noonan, please tell us about Kokopah's commitment, and congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Sakos, and good evening, Madam President, board members, Dr. Krieger, Ms. Como. I'd like to invite 7th grade social studies teacher Sheri Stiegel up to the podium with me. Let's give her a round of applause, please. And Scottsdale's social studies academic coach, Mr. Steve Williamson, please join us. It's a great honor to address the board and our community tonight. I'd like to give Mrs. Stiegel an opportunity to talk about Kokopah's journey of being a school of engagement. Thank you.
Our engagement recognition has been a long process. All the staff was committed to proving what was required on the application, and we finally reached the top this year, so.
And now Steve is going to share some words as well.
So, one thing at the civics conference, they gave a great quote by Sandra Day O'Connor. High-quality civics learning used to be the staple of every state education system, but today, many have pushed it aside to make more room for math, science, and language arts instruction. This has created civics education engagement crisis among our young people. However, this is not the case at Kokopah Middle School. Our new standards to be implemented in the 2021 school year call for students to be more civically engaged. An example of civic engagement in our new standards is, in 8th grade, engage in projects to help or inform others, such as community service or service learning projects. These new standards will emphasize the importance of civics education at every school. Kokopah is a trailblazer for civics education in the state of Arizona. Thank you.
So I'm not going to give this podium up, so. I just want to acknowledge another event that happened at Kokopah earlier this month. Kokopah was lucky enough to host a naturalization ceremony, and we had 20 applicants become U.S. citizens on our campus, and I'd like to acknowledge Dr. Krieger, who is the keynote address, and many of our board members were in attendance as well. It was a, very much a student-centered event. We had 20 ambassadors who personally escorted all of the applicants and led them through campus and were kind of their, you know, chauffeurs while they were at Kokopah. Our jazz choir sang the national anthem. We had five members from our Girl Scouts troop present the collars, so it was a really student-centered event, and I just wanted to share very quickly an email I received the next day from one of our new citizens. And he wrote, "Mr. Noonan and all the staff of Kokopah Middle School, greetings from one of the newest American citizens. I want to personally thank you and all your staff for the wonderful ceremony yesterday. It's been a long process for many of us, and to see the ceremony yesterday made it all so worthwhile. I would like to pay a special compliment to your ambassadors because they ensured that each of us felt special and got where we needed to be. Again, thank you and all your staff for the wonderful event because civics and citizenship are important, but sometimes undervalued. I hope the 8th grade students who attended realize how important it was to those 20 people they saw taking the oath. Gratefully, Jason Ryan." So, nice document from a very grateful citizen, so thank you for giving me the opportunity to share.
And I would say that the amazing thing about that presentation to me was, there were 20 new citizens, but they were coming from 20 different countries, and they were of all ages above 21. And next, our district athletic director, Mr. Nathan Slater.
President Beckman, governing board, Dr. Krieger, Sandra, thank you for having us tonight. We have two athletic celebrations this evening. The first one is our amazing trainer Natasha Anderson. She's our athletic trainer at Desert Mountain High School, who's working with us under our AZ Sports Medicine Partnership. She provides the students at Desert Mountain with great care while looking for their well-being and safety. She's a valued member of SUSD who's been with the district since 2011. For all that work, Natasha was awarded the Warren H. Lee Athletic Trainer of the Year, awarded by the Arizona Athletic Trainers Association. Congratulations for that, Natasha. That's a big deal. Natasha was invited to attend a banquet where she received the award given by the president, David Messman, and this is a tremendous honor. We're so proud of you. Thank you so much, Natasha, for all that you do to keep our kids safe. It's a huge honor to be the trainer of the year, and congratulations. Thanks so much. I've got something for you to hit you with. There you go. Okay, next up, I'd like to call up the Coronado principal, Ms. Amy Palitucci, Coronado AD Brandon Larson, Coach Barker, and the Coronado soccer team. Come on up, guys. While, yeah, there we go. While they're walking up, I'd like to thank the governing board, Dr. Krieger, for all your support of athletics, including coming to our banquet at the beginning of the month. It's a great event at the McCormick, and we really appreciate you guys coming and showing support of athletics at that event. Thank you so much. Say it looks like a football team, but we call it Football Team. Way to go, guys. This season, the Coronado Boys Soccer Team captured the program's third state championship. Their two previous titles were won in the 4A Conference in 2014 and 2017. This year, Coronado won the 3A Conference State Championship, a squad that showcased 13 first-time varsity players, and over the last seven games, the Don's compiled a 7-0 record, outscoring their opponents 52 to 6. The Don's were led by first-team all-region players, Lalo Gonzalez, Christian Torres, Adan Vale, Johan Palifex, as well as junior striker Gabriel Gonzalez. Sit down for this one. Gabriel Gonzalez was also the Player of the Year for the region, as well as the Player of the Year for the 3A Conference, having scored 59 goals. In addition to his 2.9-goal-per-game average, he also had 20 assists. During the state championship game versus Northwest Christian, the game was tied 0-0 at half, but thanks to some adjustments by Coach Nick Barker, the game became a rout, and the Don's won 5-0. During their four games in the state tournament, the Don's outscored their opponents 24 to 3. Congratulations, guys. Very proud of you, bringing home another title. Coronado Don's Boys Soccer Team, congratulations, Don's. Way to go. We're heading out the door here.
Good job, guys.
That's all of the recognition we have?
Okay. We now call upon Dr. Krieger to present the superintendent's comments.
Thank you. The, and I appreciate our district staff sharing the accolades of schools and school leadership. Much appreciated. From strong school leadership to academic rigor to supporting our student athletes and the athletic performance themselves, I could not be more impressed with the breadth and depth of the things that we do in SUSD, and this is just the tip of the iceberg. At Tonalea K-8 School, for example, Dr. Pruniski, students are looking beyond themselves and into ways of helping others, specifically those who receive assistance from the Arizona Chapter of the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, and even closer to home, Tonalea staff and Tonalea families that are directly impacted by these terrible diseases. Over the past two years, Tonalea students have raised nearly $4,000 through their Pennies for Patients campaign. What's more, students have been able to see on video how those pennies are being put to use in the community. They have fun along the way, too, with various activities, such as PJ Day, Crazy Hair Day, and even duct taping the assistant principal to the wall. Not sure about that one myself, but it's all in good fun and for a good cause, and the Student Council is learning some great leadership and organizational skills, advertising, and also how to conduct a campaign. Thank you, Tonalea, and I know you will reach your goal of raising $3,000 next year. Lastly, even though we have just returned from spring break, our Human Resources Department is already fully engaged in the hiring and staffing process for next school year. We are hopeful that the salary and benefits package that the governing board adopted two weeks ago for next year's budget will help us attract the best job candidates to fill our open positions, and also make a statement to our current employees about how much we value and appreciate them and what they do every day for our students and schools. The comments that I have received from teachers and other staff members, and the amount of recognition that we receive from newspapers, literally around the globe, and a unpaid-for five-minute discussion on KTAR Talk Show in the afternoon about how wonderful Scottsdale is for taking care of all of their employees with the pay raise and also with taking care of the increase in health benefits for people, which is huge, you know, greatly appreciated. And I want to thank Dr. Bowman and the HR staff for their hard work getting those salary schedules out and getting the contracts out on Friday prior to spring break, so they all went out. Thank you all very much.
Okay, we are moving on now to Agenda Item 6, Public Comments. Sandra, do I have all the cards submitted?
We have none.
There's none? Wow. This is a record. All right.
Everybody sit. Nobody move.
No give-backs. All right. Agenda Item 7, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Excluding Items N, approve the revisions to governing board policies, which has been tabled. Item O, approval of the procurement of Chromebook purchases. Item R, Phase 1 authorization of expenditure, Climattec Direct Digital Control, DDC system, and Item S, the approval of K-8 School Avid Advancement via Individual Determination Program. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Greenberg, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Consent agenda is approved. Board Member Beckham had asked for consent agenda item O, the approval of the procurement of Chromebook purchase, to be pulled separately and discussed. Board Member Beckham?
Thank you. Could I ask Debbie Spalding to come forward?
I would like to ask Debbie Spalding and our Science Coordinator, Barb Reiner, to come forward to help answer questions.
Hi, good evening, President Beckman, members of the board, Dr. Krieger, and Sandra. Thank you for having us up here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. The reason that I polled it is not that there is something that I'm not in support of it, it's just the dollar amount, the 2.5 million. I believe it's not a routine matter, which tends to be what a consent item is. Under, I would like to thank you first for your background and your budget details by outlining where the funds are coming from and that we do have availability of those funds in our budget, so thank you very much. I wanted to bring up, because it just didn't happen to be in the background information, and I felt it important that the other governing board members be aware of it, that on 4/17/18, we approved the first kind of phase or set of Chromebooks, and that we approved 216 Chromebooks to be approved, and this is the second one on 3/19, and I believe, is this a five, if I remember correctly, five years that you decided we were going to be purchasing this technology over? Was it three years?
Last year was a purchase to help make the number of devices at the schools equitable, and then this year really starts the five-year replacement plan.
Okay. So, the, oh, so 18, I thought 19 was also to help with making it equitable.
Last year was just about making it equitable, if I said it backwards. But this year, now that it's, we have about 0.7 computers per kid at all the schools now, and so now we're going to start replacing. Last year, we supplemented what we already had, and now for every computer that we give out, we need to take something that's six, seven, eight years old back.
And that's all I wanted to be able to have on the record and have the governing board members understand, so thank you.
Okay. Do I have any further questions or comments? Board Member Greenberg?
Just a couple of quick questions. My understanding is that this first phase of the five-year plan is targeted at the core classes specifically, science. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And the whole overarching purpose, since we weren't here, is that we are trying to get a one-to-one ratio for all students to technology? Is that correct?
Our goal is one-to-one in all of the core classes.
Core classes. How is special education, for example, treated, given that it's a very important and vulnerable program? Is that something that is looked into in this five-year plan? You know, I've been through special education courses, a lot of them use technology, a lot of students use technology. How are those being updated? Is that more routine?
That's a great question. In the amount that we are requesting, we'll be able to also support the Special Ed self-contained classes. I'm working with the Executive Director of Special Ed, Margaret Ruberg, to come up with a finalized list of where we would want them, because of course, it'll be for science this year.
Right.
And classes that use online resources for science.
Right.
Because some of the self-contained might not use that. But as the content areas come through, we will absolutely provide equal to Special Ed.
So, basically, this focus on core subjects, it still may go into other, maybe nonspecific areas that still use it for science, but are specialized programs and the like. Is that?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda item O, the procurement of Chromebook Board Member?
So moved.
So, Board Member Greenberg makes the motion. All in favor?
Second.
Have a second. Board Member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Board Member Beckham had also asked for Agenda Consent to Item R, Phase 1, the authorization of expenditure, Climattec Direct Digital Control, DDC system, to be pulled and discussed separately. Board Member Beckham?
The reason that I polled this is because I would like the proposal also to have a, the procurement method that was taken for this particular contract, since it's an expenditure of over $1 million. It is mentioned that there is just one company that was contacted under this control, and so I just want an explanation as to compliance with our procurement laws and that it is not, as I had asked the question, a sole source. And why not a sole source, since it is a sole source as it looks on this proposal?
Yes. Good evening, President Beckman, members of the board, Dr. Krieger, Sandra. The Climattec, to give you just a little bit of background, Climattec represents Allerton DDC Systems. Allerton is pretty much throughout our district. We only have a few sites that don't have the Allerton Energy Management System. Excuse me. So, the one thing that we looked for when we started this project is, is there an opportunity to increase a competitive bid by putting it out there to other contractors? As we did, started digging into the design work, started digging into our other options, we found real quickly that it would just cost us more money to depart from the Allerton system and go into another system. So, Allerton is on the Maricopa County contract, so that in itself allows us to just go directly to Climattec for their services. But we also looked at the total scope of the project, and that's why we're calling it Phase 1, because there are other parts of the project that we figured, well, we could probably save some money if we split this out and did the work through a mechanical contractor. So, we're actively pursuing bids from mechanical contractors to do the other half of the work, and that'll come to you later in April. So, it is not a sole source. We're not considering it a sole source. We went through a cooperative to do the purchase, but as I had shared with you in my email, they are the only Allerton provider in the state of Arizona and Nevada. So, that's the, that's the explanation there.
Okay. Thank you. The second question that I had was on being able to provide the source of funding. I realize it says that it's under bonds 600, or under the bond, and under life cycle. I went back and I was able to pull up the life cycle information that you provided us. Let's see, just excuse me a second. Let's see if I, I'm going to be going from memory, but I believe it was last year, you provided us the life cycle. The first phase was like, not the first phase, but for 2017 was like $3 million 1, and then the next phase up through December of '18 was the $9 million 9. And on that chart, Mountainside and Desert Mountain were not on it, so I'm assuming that the, this particular item was under the future, or near-future items, which was January of 2019 going forward, yet we did not have that schedule. So, will you be providing us that schedule today, or will we be getting it in the future so that we can see that the, that the funds, that the source of funds is available for this particular purchase?
So, two things to answer your question. One is, in the smart sheet that I shared with the governing board, all of those projects are in there to see where they land, when they're happening. When we brought to you, what you're referring to is the February 13th governing board meeting, in which I brought a list of projects that were both life cycle, safety and security, front office admin remodels, there was a host of them, some of them for that year, some of them for the following year. Some of them for that year, some of them for the following year. In the March-April timeframe, life turned upside down for Scottsdale schools. And it did for me, too. We started working on Hopi and Pima and put a bunch of work to the side until we could get everything working properly. So, we're now in 1819, work that should have been done in 1718 as the February 13th proposal identified. And so, we're now catching up with that work. The front office remodels, principals, front office remodels are going to happen. I spent spring break going to all of the campuses, looking at front offices, and we'll have more information on that. So, the, where the funds are coming from, same life cycle budget. Everything just got shifted a year. I have a document that I sent you via email about 2:30 today that I can share with everybody. And you can have that to look at either now or after the board meeting. But the funding is there. The life cycle expenditures really slowed considerably last year. And so what we thought was going to be a fairly advanced, fairly quick project routine, it just, it never materialized because we were focused on Hopi and Pima and getting that squared away. So...
So, since I haven't been able to see that, but you can just tell me, was, is that, is, was now this particular, this particular item then placed into which one of those categories? The 9.9 million that was shown, or is it the near-futures, the 6 million?
The Mountainside Middle School was not on the list at all.
Right, at all. Right, that's why, so what...
It was after we started looking at the project more closely and looking at the age of the school that we decided to pull that in. It didn't make sense to, because Mountainside and Desert Mountain are on the same central plant. They live off the same cold water. And so, to shut down the plant one year for one school and then shut down for another school in a different year, we decided to bring them both together. We'd save in having the contractor there once instead of twice. And so we brought those projects together because it only made good sense. So, there's, because, again, because the project slowed down, there's plenty of money that has not been spent in that area of life cycle. In this document that I'll share with you, current expenditures for life cycle for the 1718 fiscal year was 1.739,717. And then for 1819, we're just ramping up all of our projects, getting ready for the summer. We've only spent $77,000. So, we're a far cry from the $7 million that was originally proposed.
All right. So, I thank you very much for making that clear, and I'll look forward to getting that document on my email. Appreciate that.
Any further questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rowland.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda item R, Phase 1, Authorization of Expenditure, Climattec Direct Digital Control, DDC System?
So moved.
Board Member Greenberg makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Beckham, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Board Member Kravitz asked for consent agenda item S, the approval of K-8 school Avid advancement via individual determination program to be polled and discussed separately. Dr. Kikard?
Thank you, President Beckman, members of the board. I'd like to call up Dr. Hagigot to be able to answer questions and further illuminate all of us. So, Dr. Hagigot, thank you.
I just have a basic question. Can this, do we need to approve this as K-8? Or can we break it into K-5 and then approve 6-8?
You can make a motion after, when it's called for, that amends the action item.
I mean, I, you know, we saw the presentation before the break. For me, I would like to visit a school or get some more information about Avid in the K-5 grade level to see how it's implemented. I understand it's, you know, in the past it focused on college readiness, which I can understand implementing in the middle school and hopefully then rolling it out or reintroducing it back into our high schools. But I'm not quite certain how it is implemented in the elementary levels.
So, if I can introduce, because I know Dr. Hagigot would be humble, but Dr. Hagigot is an extremely successful principal at both, in Paradise Valley, the K-6 level and the 7-8 level of middle school. And both of those schools were Avid schools. So, she can speak to that question, I believe, from personal experience.
Yes. Board Member Kravitz, thank you for addressing that question. I want to share with you that often we wait too long to prepare our students. And by the time they come to middle school, they don't come with the foundation that they need to be successful, even at that level. So, implementing Avid at the elementary level provides that foundation and that systematic approach to best practices. And it gives an opportunity to have that accountability for the teachers, for the students, for the community, because it really creates a framework that gives the opportunity to have a language that is throughout the entire school. So, again, having it at the K-5, it really brings and promotes college and career-ready skills from the beginning. It's really great to see, for example, in kindergarten, one of the pieces that is included is having students wear that cap and gown from the beginning. And teachers take those pictures so that the student can see themselves as that college graduate. We're not talking just high school. We're talking college graduate. That's just part of the culture that is instated there. You have the opportunity to receive a video that I sent where the students that are being interviewed are the ones that are sharing why Avid is so key for them at the elementary level and what are some of the pieces and key elements that allow them to feel successful. I've had an opportunity to interview students. And initially, they will say that it's somewhat cumbersome for them and they don't want to be organized, or they don't want to participate in certain activities initially because it can be intimidating. But as they continue to progress through the learning in the program, they're able to really feel confident about what they're doing within these strategies.
If I may, I guess I'm, what, why I would like to visit a school is, and thank you for sending the video. I'm trying to envision or understand how this program be different or address issues at these schools versus what's going on at our other elementary schools that are preparing our students for the next level.
And there's not a lot that I can say here that will give you the idea of what it looks like. Because being a part of that environment, just as you walk in with the culture, you feel it. But what I can share with you is, part of what I shared as the information that I sent was specific to what is the difference between Avid Elementary and Good Teaching, which is what we've been talking about here for a couple of sessions now. And what it really does, it brings this consistent vocabulary. It brings this consistent framework. It brings the ability for students and staff to understand. Everyone can collaborate, but to do it in a systematic approach where it's across the entire school, where you're not reminding people anymore of how to do it. Staff is trained in certain ways of doing it, where it just brings that cohesiveness to the entire school. You're not leaving it to chance. It's something that is the professional development, what is expected. And what it does, it just reduces that variability. Is there good teaching going on at many of our schools? Absolutely. Is it being done with the same consistency that I would want if I had twins or triplets in every classroom? Not necessarily. And this brings this consistency. As a leader, I was very pleased to be able to walk in any classroom with the expectations that were already set for the teachers and be able, there's a checklist where you work with your site team and you're able to make commitments as part of the school-wide setting to where now you are expected to see certain strategies in place. There's a lot of support that Avid provides that allows the educators to be able to move forward with the learning instead of trying to go look at the research, see what's best. This all comes already, prepared and ready to go for teachers to start that process and be consistent and not have that variability within classroom to classroom. It's really strong. I've witnessed it as an educator and as a leader. And to me, it has really brought any school to that next level, which really allows for students to feel prepared, not just be prepared.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Board Member Perleberg?
Thank you. Get that off. Okay. It's not turning off. Sorry. You're still seeing me blinking stuff. Sorry. Thank you for that. And thank you for our earlier discussions and our special meetings. Obviously, there is clearly that theme of, are we sure for these dollars, which are always limited here in our district? Are we really going to see an impact? I'm, obviously, I want to note tonight that we're approving Copper Ridge, HoCom and Yavapai as kind of those pilot schools. This board and certainly myself have expressed that concern of we don't kind of want to go back to the past where it did, the program itself kind of just got very watered down and really wasn't implemented with fidelity. So, I guess tonight, definitely like to hear the plan for how you see the timing in, we have these pilot schools, and how much time is necessary before you bring back to the board, here's the implementation at these three different schools, here's the impact we're seeing, the value for those dollars. How much time before the board can...
There's a couple of different stages. We are able to bring information back truly right away. And I'm going to share with you why. The first level is that professional development where teachers are trained to be able to duplicate these strategies within the classroom. And so you have a site team. So, part of our report would be that this leadership team is formed, that there's an accountability system in place so that it does get implemented with high fidelity. This is not just with fidelity. You have to have a level of leadership, which we do in every single one of these schools, that will take that level of fidelity to the highest level. And so, it would be how quickly you want it. We can report semester. We can report quarterly. We want to walk you with, or walk with us in this journey so that you're able to see what are the outcomes of a program or a framework and a systematic approach to being able to move schools forward. And this is not, while the outcome is with kids and for kids, you will see the level of teaching in our district increase to that highly effective level of teachers that we all desire in every single school. And I appreciate that you say this pilot because my hope is that as we continue and we see how great dividends this provides for us, that we do choose to continue throughout. I know that there are districts that have Avid throughout every school, but we got to start with baby steps. And we have to make sure that we do it right and that we have the leaders in place, which we do at this time, and the teachers' willingness to be able to move forward. You know, it's just great to see the support from the Copper Ridge community. Today, we have our PTO press and a couple of our teachers that are here in support because they are excited to have something that is going to put them separate from other places. Because we all know that parents are looking for a great culture. They're looking for rigor. And they're looking for a school that is really going to provide an outcome for their students beyond a K-12 experience. And that's what we want to provide with this Avid framework.
Thank you very much. And I think we do all appreciate the concept of piloting this and making sure it's really in all the direction where other schools want to go and maybe some choose not to. But just to confirm and kind of memorialize, we'll be having those discussions before there is any expansion, correct?
Absolutely. Yes, yes. We would want to include you as part of that journey. Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Board Member Greenberg?
Just a couple of quick questions. Dr. Kikard said that you taught at two schools, elementary and middle, that you were Avid schools. Is that correct?
The middle school was, yes.
Middle school. So, what, but not the elementary school?
The elementary was not at the time, no.
Not at the time. Is it now?
One of them was. The other one is not, no.
What was the difference that you perceive professionally between elementary school then and its teaching style and the middle school? Is it really that cohesiveness in education? Was there greater academic achievement? Was there a before and after, before we were, you know, not doing well as a school? We were losing students. Then we brought it in and students were performing better. What's that picture from your experience?
Yes, yes, and yes to several questions that you asked. What we noticed was that everyone was rowing in the same direction. We spoke the same language. We held each other accountable. I was able to speak from classroom to classroom and teacher to teacher regarding what was expected. Students became a part of this process where they were supporting one another in the strategies, regardless of what they were. And so the cohesiveness, students called themselves family, that they were in this family unit because they understood each other. We noticed that there was a higher level of understanding within those students that did not have the proficiency. They wanted to help one another. And so it's just, again, the culture is truly impacted. And the expectations are raised to a level that you don't see when you don't have a systematic unified approach to teaching and learning. So, it was great dividends.
And so, did those results, I mean, I'm, I, as a student myself, I was certainly annoyed by constant results driven, you know, you have to get As, you have to get 2100s or whatever on the SAT. But, and we did not have the easy merit exam at the time. But were the general test results, the benchmarks that our state does use or did use at the time, did those improve as well?
Yes. And especially when you look at the middle school, the students that participated, we were school-wide avid, but those that were in the Avid elective and they had that opportunity to be in Tudorology and other supports, you would see that there was an increase, not just in their scores, but in their confidence. You have them go up and public speak when in other times they just wouldn't. They represent their interest at lunch and any other time when there were some controversial topics. And you would see them being the ones that were leading any of the activities or opportunities that came up with the confidence that you would expect from all students. But this is something that was provided as part of the training that was provided to them via the strategies that Avid offers.
How long, if this is piloted, how long does it take generally to get those teachers and to get the administration and get those students in the rhythm of an Avid learning? Is it a two-year, three-year, one-year? How long do you, I mean...
Year one and two are specific to being able to create that leadership team, which is the site team. And second year, you start with that implementation across the school with the strategies that are selected by the site team. There's no, there's no recommendation to do a lot of them at the same time because we all know that when you start doing too many things, you start to not do it at the highest level that one wants to do it. So, what we do is select certain strategies and then bring that accountability so that we're constantly checking ourselves. Is this being done with fidelity? Have we watered it down? What are we seeing that we need to address? What do we need to change? And so when you look at all of those aspects, for me as a leader, and I've really talked about this with our leaders here in Scottsdale, that fidelity is key. If the leader doesn't have the buy-in that it requires, then your staff will struggle. And so what I am very fortunate to have is leaders that are interested in pushing this to a level where there is going to be that training that is needed, the support that is needed. I'm very pleased to have the experience because I look forward to walking into classrooms and seeing some of the strategies that they've selected because each school will pick based on what their site team feels that is the priority and then continue the course. But again, it's all about being active in those classrooms. Parents are also involved in the sense that they're able to understand the language and then they're able to provide the support that the students can need. So, there's just, there's the culture. There's the leadership. There are the partnerships. It's a really well-oiled machine that if utilized with the fidelity that it's intended, we can see the growth. For the academic growth piece, we're looking at two to three years to start to see a trend and a pattern of what are the outcomes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Board Member Beckham?
Thank you. I had, on March 7th, when you brought this up, I had some very specific questions. And so, I don't know if you're prepared to present them today. But one of the reasons that, you know, this was a discussion item, so it was somewhat new. So, I was able to do a little bit of research. And I went to Paradise Valley United, or, excuse me, Paradise Valley Unified School District to look up Avid. And Avid there is a program for Title I schools, for at-risk schools. And every, the schools that are utilizing the program are at... And every, the schools that are utilizing the program are at more type, they are Title I schools. So my question is, is Avid, is it separated out for Title I and at-risk students versus not? Because you are asking a recommendation of Copper Ridge, Ho-Kom, and Yavapai, and those three schools are very different, which I will say, and as, as a board, I would, I, I don't like the fact that they're lumped together because they are so different. I would like to have them separated and so that we could understand the objectives and the goals because I think that they would be very different, looking at a non-Title I school of Copper Ridge versus a Yavapai, which is a Title I school. And so I'll leave the question, is Avid for, primarily for, and Title I schools? And how will that then be implemented into a non-Title I school at SUSTD?
Avid began with a Title I population, but it has expanded since. And I'd like to invite George from Avid, who will tell us a little bit about that. I did prepare for your question, so I think he was on my right. Will you join us, please?
Hello. I'm sorry. To President Beckham and board members and superintendent and staff. The question about has Avid been implemented in other districts with, or in other schools with a lower rate of poverty? The answer is yes. My former district, where I was a district director for Avid, we had a school with a very low free and reduced lunch rate that fed into a high school that had the Avid systems in place. The K-8 school implemented Avid there to align kids and have kids with a certain exit skill set that when they went into the high school, they all could do Cornell notes, they could all have certain learning processes already in place. And so they had aligned what they did within their district, within that K-8 school. Also, the district of Queen Creek Unified Schools, they have Avid at every one of their schools, just to help clarify that answer.
So is, and thank you for attending today. Is, is the program any different at a Title I versus a non-Title I school? Or is it just the same program presented to the students in the same way?
It's the same research-based strategies, but they look sometimes different based on what a school at, that starts at a higher starting point or a starting point further along. A school that has certain things in place will be able to accelerate their implementation on a quicker basis. But it's the same exact philosophies that are implemented, which are research-based of Marzano Strategies, Danielson Strategies, and Hattie's work.
And then the, in this, I guess we'll be going back to Dr. Hagegat is, so what are the, I'd like you to break it down between the three schools because that's what you're asking us to vote on. What are their objectives and what are the measured results that you are expecting from each school? And you probably need to do that for year one, two, and three, given that you said it's three years.
The interest for Copper Ridge is to move forward with the full implementation of Avid. And their goal is a very lofty one, which I do applaud them for. They want to be a school of distinction at their third year. And Lindsay, there was, the other one was a school of excellence. Coming up. And so, and we have three different journeys because they're in different places. So I'm glad that you asked that.
Thank you. So our, our goal is to first be, and there's, are a couple of different things that you can do with Avid as a school. One is becoming a demonstration school, which means that you are successful with the program to the point where other schools come and visit. And we are early adopters at Copper Ridge. We believe in, in doing what's best for kids and whatever we need to do to make that happen. And we think Avid is, is that. What you can do after becoming a demonstration school is becoming a school of distinction. And that's something that's awarded to the top 3% of Avid schools. And when Dr. Hagegat and I attended a session at the Avid conference that was how to become an Avid school of distinction, we said, let's go. And we, we went and we're just blown away because it wasn't just something where you get recognition. It was the schools that we talked to and heard from had such high-quality schools that really benefited students. And we, we are here to be the best for our students. And that was, that was a goal that I immediately said, we're, we're doing that. If, if we can get Avid, we will be a school of distinction. And I have awesome teachers and parents who are on board with it, and I think we can make that happen.
And so what are those measurements that make you a school of distinction? How does, how will Copper Ridge grow? I mean, I'm looking for very concrete. Is it, you know, AZ Merit scores? Is it your benchmark scores?
Yes, yes. And yes, it's a very rigorous process for someone to be a school of distinction. A demonstration school is also rigorous. And what Avid uses, and let me make sure that I say it correctly because they have changed the, the name for it since I was doing it. It's a coaching and certification instrument. And it includes the assessments from the state. It includes school-related data of the fidelity of the implementation of the strategies and the practice. And so, because your question was, how do you become a school of distinction or a demonstration school? Say it again.
My, my question is, what are the measurements that you are going to be met? What are the metrics you will be measuring yourself by to know that this has been a success? So I'm looking from a student perspective, what you're anticipating your success measurements to be.
So we have a couple of measurements. One is what we use for the district for other schools. Our goal is to see a maintaining or increasing those scores because remember, we're working with a very proficient population. The other metrics come from Avid, which is what I was asked, what I was sharing with you, where they bring in a tool that allows us to see how successful we are being as part of the implementation for the different strategies. The reason why I know it's a rigorous process because I've been through the demonstration, what it takes to be a demonstration school. And a lot of it has to do with student achievement, but it also has to do with how they are performing as part of the goals set by the site team. And so some of these goals could be specific to critical reading. It could be specific to whether it be organization, whether it be collaboration. There are different measurements that are utilized so that we can see how these strategies are being used and how it's impacting student achievement. It connects with both student achievement and the culture of how students are progressing through the journey of Avid.
I, I'm sorry. That, I, I'm really looking for concrete measurements to know what your objectives are. Is, and, and then what those metrics of measurement will be. I, you know, it appears, unless I'm hearing it wrong, that really what you're talking about is, what was mentioned is that if you get distinction or excellence, it's saying that you are implementing Avid with fidelity.
Yes.
I'm not looking for that. I'm going to assume you're going to be implementing it with fidelity. What I'm looking for, because we're going to be spending X amount of dollars, is what are you, how are the students going to change? What, how, what is going to be the difference for the students? Are you anticipating, and I'm looking for numbers?
Higher academic proficiency is ultimately.
And what I'm looking for, I, I can see that we're not ready to give that tonight. But is it, you're going to be raising your growth by 3%? And having very concrete measurements of what you're anticipating so that at year one, you can, and, and if, if it's only implementing the PD, it might look a little different in year one. But you mentioned academics, but in year two and three, I want to see what those metrics are so that when we come back, as it is mentioned, that we will actually have something to tie it to. But I don't want to approve another program in which we don't have specific objectives and measured goals individually for each of the three schools.
Well, and this is all tied to the continuous improvement plan. We're not losing the continuous improvement plan. We, we're using Avid as a strategy to reach those goals that are established in the continuous improvement plan. And so the site gets together and they look at their data and they decide what it is that they need to increase on. And through these strategies, you will see those measurements of success of higher academic achievement. But it's not going to leave what the district has determined to be that continuous improvement plan. And so this is not in lieu of, this is to support that plan so that we can continue that growth. So we anticipate that we'll continue to use our state test, we'll continue to use Common Formative Assessment, we'll continue to use the benchmarks. And at the end of the day, what we want is, we want a healthy student. And by that, I mean overall, while academics is extremely important and we are going to achieve that higher academic levels, we also want to make sure that they feel prepared to continue from grade level to grade level and beyond when they graduate. And Avid allows you to see this and to do this. And so I do believe that with the connection of the continuous improvement plan, the goals that are selected by the site, the teachers and the leadership, you'll be able to see, is this something that is giving us the outcomes that we set ourselves for in that continuous improvement plan?
And if I may, also, remember, we brought to you the metrics, the district metrics and the, was worked on last year. And then again, we, Dr. Nance's department worked on refining those for measuring all of our schools, all of our students throughout the district. So what we are talking about here is different schools will use different strategies to achieve those goals that we set in those metrics. And so these three schools are asking for Avid to be a major focus for them to achieve those district-wide goals that we had in that district metrics. And is that, Dr. Nance, what was the specific name that we called that, those measures that we worked on? Metrics?
I'll just.
I'll just throw you some more softballs, just. So if you remember those, so we have district metrics that we're using. We're not reinventing the wheel when it, when it comes to how we measure our students' success and.
So what I'm hearing is you're two different things, district metrics and you're using the schools' metrics for the.
The continuous improvement plans are also based on the district-wide metrics.
So that every continuous improvement plan has the exact same.
No, they choose different ones.
Different ones. So that's what I would like to see. I would like to see for this program, what your objectives are for each school and what those are, concretely what they are. So that, that's just what I would like to see.
Well, and as soon as, as soon as like for the following year, they need to look at their data and what were the outcomes of this year, including their Common Formative. And at that point, they will start to do the next year's continuous improvement plan. So they will, you will have that is the short answer.
But I'd like to have it because you should be, to me, if you're going to be looking at a new program, you would be using the, as a baseline, what you had before. And you're saying to yourselves, hmm, something, I may need something a little bit more to achieve these goals because otherwise you wouldn't be looking at it, at a program like Avid. So you can use last year's measurement in where you're going this year and to get some idea of what you want to do going forward. The second thing I'll just bring up is I would like to see, also from a budget standpoint, I know you, you gave us a chart, but it was once again, it was just the three schools then divided by grades. I'd like to see the chart and what actually we are funding. So for Copper Ridge, what does that mean? For Ho-Kom, how much would we be spending? And for Yavapai, and then as it was mentioned on March 7th, this is not just a one-year pilot program. It was going out so that we're not really just approving, hey, we're going to do it this one year and then not approve next year. So I'd like to see that continuum of what it is we're actually approving that you think it's going to cost going forward. Because I think it was mentioned that if it just stops at the middle school, then it's not doing what we need to do, that we're looking at in the future adding it to the high school. Well, that, there's a cost associated with that. And I would like to see that whole continuum so that this board, when it approves this program, we know what we're approving from a fiscal standpoint.
Yes, and I have the yearly cost and I can share that with you. I don't know if you want me to do it right this second. I can give you an idea. For the middle school membership fee is $3,999. Elementary school membership fee is $995. Then we have a library. But again, and this is a yearly cost for each school. I do understand what you're asking, which is very similar to being able to just put the three-to-five-year plan is what you're looking for. If I understand you correctly.
Right. So a chart would probably suffice.
Yeah, I can definitely get that for you.
And I did have a similar question on the budget. Board member Beckham, regarding that, your chart at the last meeting, sorry to cut in. You had Ho-Kom up to, which is K-5, up to $14,020 for the whole thing, and the same with Yavapai. And then Copper Ridge, up to $20,000. And then I looked at Mr. Gads', 2019-20 budget projection for programs. And I had a question there, so sorry, you can jump back in here. But we're, we're talking about the budget. And he had listed $30,000 for Copper Ridge and .5 for an Avid coordinator at $39,180. So I just wanted a little clarity.
Yes, so you have all those numbers accurate where we broke it down. The part that is also an expectation is for an Avid coordinator, which that would be at district. And the other piece is the Avid elective teacher, which would be also a higher expense for Copper Ridge. But everything that you just shared with me is what we have been quoted for what we're going after right now.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I have one last one. I do believe, as I said before, I am supportive of Avid because my daughter was in Avid at Mojave in sixth grade and it did benefit her greatly. And I believe there is data, maybe there has to be out there, showing a correlation between children enrolled in Avid at the levels and test scores, I would think. Or maybe it's being worked on, not sure. But would like to see if that, if there is that. Secondly, I did receive a, I want to acknowledge a call from one of your Copper Ridge parents, very excited about the program. So I hope we can get more information and thank you for your time.
Board member Beckham? So I would just like to, I guess at this time, I would like to amend and maybe is it table this until we get the information that we requested on March 7th and tonight before we vote? Okay, so you want a second?
Well, I'll, can I put forth a question?
Board member Perleberg?
Thank you. I think before that, we do that, we should certainly ask staff any negative consequences that possibly arise if we do that.
The only one is that we are looking to be able to attend the summer institute and that, you know, they're expecting for us to have one way or another so that we're able to participate in that. So that would be the challenge that we would encounter.
Is there a deadline then, you're saying?
It was February and they have graciously agreed to extend it for us as we go through this process. And so they're, they're needing, because we are holding some of the spaces for schools that are already a part of Avid. And so they're, they're wanting for us to make a decision so that we're able to move forward.
Board member Beckham?
Could I just follow up with that? How long would it take you to get us the information that we've requested so that you could bring it back to us for an approval?
I'm as fast as tomorrow. I operate on that kind of schedule. It's important for our schools to get moving on this. They're extremely excited. The teachers are very eager to be able to start this process. And we just feel that it's really good for kids. And so for me, it's something that I want you to be comfortable with and, and really understand that we're in it not as a trend. We're in it because it's what we've researched. And for me, it's what I've lived to be really, really great for all students, not just Title I. And so when I tell you as early as tomorrow, I so want to share that I'm not joking.
Well, I don't know that we're meeting again tomorrow, so I can say that that's probably not going to happen. Our next meeting is when April is.
April 11.
April 11. So that sounds like it would be a possibility then.
Mrs., President Beckman, may I say a few words? Since, since I came on board, there has been a consistent theme from the board to say, make us a more rigorous district. Better prepare our students for post-secondary education or whatever choice they make, but prepare them. prepare them. We had Avid in this district, and despite what I've heard tonight, when I talk to principals who had it, they say it was a great program. Kids advanced, kids achieved. Yes, it changes attitudes, but it also changed student achievement significantly. This is a nationally recognized program that we are questioning, and yet has been proven to be successful in districts around us and across the country. We are bringing you a program that we believe will help not only the students at two Title I schools, who sometimes, for whatever reason, don't have college experience in their family's history, to the school in our north end, who knows that being, from a family that has college in their experience, doesn't necessarily prepare kids to go to college. And this is a program that does that. So, yes, I'm asking that we have brought to you a program that I know is successful. I've seen it in my previous district, that is successful in preparing kids for post-secondary education, and that has been a consistent theme from this board and, and the previous board in the last eight months that I've been here.
Board Member Perleberg?
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Krieger, for speaking up this evening in, in defense of it. And I guess I would just want to say, because obviously, I am one that shares a little skepticism, but I do feel heard. I felt heard at our last meeting, I felt heard tonight regarding that skepticism, how we need to put those safeguards up, so that, yes, it doesn't become another program that just is there on the books. I, I feel heard tonight. I am very hesitant to be a roadblock to something that our staff, our administration, our, our teachers are so eager for at these three schools, because I also respect the fact that you've just started it off in these three schools, and given us all that comfort level of, we're going to truly see as this a fit here, and maybe in our district. I appreciate that, and I guess that's why I feel ready to, to go ahead, even though there's still questions, there's still, let's prove this is good for students moments. But I think we can still do that in the future, and I respect that here tonight, and would be ready to help our staff at these three schools move forward. So I'll just say that.
Board Member Beckham?
And, and I'll just, I'll respond, I don't feel I was heard. I think I was very explicit in what I asked for on March 7th, and here I'm saying it again tonight, and then you're telling me that you can have it ready tomorrow. What happened between March, the night of March 7th, when it was requested, and tonight? That no one did anything to prepare to get those answers. I didn't get a phone call saying, I would like clarity on what you were asking for. Nothing happened. So I have to say, I don't mean to be a roadblock. I would support it. I just feel that this board needs to have more information. We can't just, we are stewards of the finances of this district, and we have seen in the past that programs have been approved, and they haven't been done with fidelity. And part of the reason is, is because that when they're brought to the board, they do not give us the information that we need to be able to make an educated decision. So I do ask our board members tonight to, if it means taking a stance and saying, we are asking for more on our proposals, Dr. Krieger, and we're not getting them, and we shouldn't be approving something without the information that we're requesting, or that is appropriate to ask for. Thank you.
Board Member Greenberg?
I, Board Member Beckham, I, I appreciate those comments and those concerns, and I, I do understand it. I think the point here is that we have administrators who are taking on the responsibility to implement this with fidelity, who are taking on the responsibility and accountability to implement it and make it work, and ultimately, it ends with them if it, if it does not work. I think overall, the cost per year is 100,000, is that?
Well, we don't know, that's the point.
Well, that's, my understanding is based on the three schools, plus the teacher costs, plus the, plus the director costs. It's about 100,000 per year, which is .25% of our annual budget, and we are budgeted for it for the next three, three years. I, it would, it's, perhaps I'm wrong about that number, but it seems like I'm correct. It, it seems to me that if it doesn't work, and if it's not the right fit, or if something does go awry, that it is our job to then step in and, and note that, and deal with it appropriately. That's, that's my only comment.
Board Member Beckham?
I, I just want to follow up with it. And how do you suggest that you go about appropriately, do you mean stopping the program in a year, all of a sudden? Well, how, how are you going to know what the measurements are, so that you know that the program is being implemented properly?
Well, my-
Board Member Greenberg?
My understanding of the measurements at the schools is, are we achieving higher academic achievement over a period of three to five years? Are we achieving the goals of becoming a demonstration school or school of excellence? Are we still horrifically losing student enrollment? You know, the, the standard measurements that we've implemented with the CIPs is, unless if I'm mistaken, is that correct, the CIP plan? So those measurements are our measurements. This is a particular program that, my understanding is, that these administrators and these principals in schools believe will address those CIPs and fix or, or meet those goals that have been set out in the CIPs. And if they don't, then that's a different, that is a conversation for a later time of how we deal with the administrators, the program at that time. But right now, the question is, do we allow them to implement this plan in what they believe will achieve these goals, or not?
Board Member Beckham?
So I would just like to say that, in the past, what I've seen is that without us having it in writing upfront, there, it's never materialized and been documented. So it's been impossible to actually, after the fact of a program, go in and do what you're suggesting. So what I'm asking for is to have that information upfront. That's just been my experience.
Board Member Kravitz?
I am neither for nor against Avid, but I do share some of Ms. Beckman's concerns about having measurements in place. We saw a presentation right before break. People were away for a week, and, and blame me, but when people are on break, I try not to bother them and email them, so, my bad. And now we're asked to vote on something. We've had pro, and again, you know, we've been burned before in this district, so that's why I'm a bit shy about approving something without having all the information. Where we've implemented programs, people have changed, there's been musical chairs, there's been lack of fidelity, lack of consistency, lack of accountability. And I know that sounds very negative. That being said, like, when we were considering, I'm jumping, but, when we were considering putting a accelerated middle school program here, we went and visited middle school, like, an accelerated middle school program. I would like to visit some Avid schools to see the program in action, so I can get excited and say, this is why I have approved this program. I understand you have a deadline, because you need to let Avid know whether or not you're attending their conference. We can meet before April. I mean, we've met before. We throw another, you know, I know people don't like it, why are you having so many extra meetings? But we can have another meeting. And I think this is just a question of time and understanding, having a little bit more understanding of the program, so that we can see it in action, rather than just relying on PowerPoints and, you know, presentations and just reading off of slides what's, what's, what an Avid program is.
Board Member Greenberg?
I, I appreciate both of those comments, and I, I understand. And perhaps, even so, we can get those, what they have stated tonight, we can get it in writing, specifically what it is we are, we are measuring against. I mean, it might, while it might be clear to me, it isn't necessarily clear to others, or it might not seem clear enough or, or robust enough. My only point is, is that I, you know, I'm not, I am not a teacher, I am not an educator, I'm not somebody who can go into a school and ascertain whether, personally, whether Avid is good or bad, or IB should be implemented. That, that's, that is why we hire the administrators to do this. And at this time, you know, I, I, I appreciate that, but I mean, I, I don't know how, I don't really know what it is that you, you want us to do, other than if it doesn't work, you, I mean, there are a million things. You know, you either change the program, you fire people, you do what you do as a government, as a board of directors, on the advice of the superintendent. But I, you know, I'm not somebody who, and I've read the, the presentation materials given to me, I've listened to the personal opinions. I mean, I, it seems to me that, that Avid has support among, you know, board members who've, who themselves have experienced it directly, so I'm not, I, my goals in my mind are, are students being given every opportunity and all the resources they need to succeed? And do, does that bear out in the exam results and the other benchmarks that we have to go through? Are we stimming the, the loss of enrollment? Are we improving enrollment? Are these programs attracting people? I mean, those are my, those are my personal measurements for whether something's working or not. So that's, that's where I'm coming from. I do appreciate that that might not, that might not be all of our goals, or that might not be fully understood, or we don't want an issue where we have some administrators and principals saying, yep, that's what we're doing, and then we get new principals or administrators who are saying, no, 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 we're being measured by different goals. I, I get that. But I, I mean, I, I haven't heard anything tonight, perhaps other than the, the cost issue over the five-year period, that concerns me specifically as to the implementation of this Avid program.
Okay, can we, let's get some clarity in our ask, because first thing I would like to ask you regarding this training, or whatever it is you'd like to go to, I know we're past that date. Realistically, let's figure out if we were not to vote tonight, what is the longest, because I'm hearing from a board member over here that she'd like to visit a school, I'm hearing from Board Member Beckham that she would just like some questions answered. So I personally would like to, for us to get some clarity in what we would like to see, do, or hear, because we've had some people put a lot of time and effort into this presentation, and some people here trying to, very excited about the program. So I'd like to get some clarity in our ask. Secondly, I'd like to get some clarity from you regarding an absolute deadline that you would need, so that we could get these questions, et cetera, answered, and we'd have to meet and vote before. Does that make sense? Okay, so, is this something that we feel comfortable tabling? Should we, can you give them some clarity on what you would need to see? And can you give us a date that you would need it by? Or the-
Like I shared with you, they're holding our spot, and I've been moving them along. Initially, the presentation was going to come in April, and I had come over and asked Dr. Krieger if we could please have it in May, or in March, because they're waiting for us, so we're past the deadline. And so I, I don't want to share an opinion that is not mine to share. I haven't asked how much longer they're, they're going to hold off for us. They were kind enough to hold some of the spots with a good faith effort, is ultimately. I've worked with the Avid State Coordinator for many years, and so we have that personal relationship. And I told, and she knows, so obviously, it's a really great nationally recognized program, and so, to answer your question, we're, we're already working on an extension, as of, as of right now. And so, be a matter of me asking, but again, I don't, I can't answer for her.
Do we think, like, a week would be realistic? Like, they would be approachable with a week?
I would say they could work with us.
And do you think you could get your questions answered and things done in a week?
Yes. It sounds like they care, and to do what I've asked, so.
I'd have to ask, I just, I don't know. It, it sounds reasonable to me, but until I ask, it's hard for me to give an exact time.
How do you want to proceed?
I think we need to go, because I've got something.
Uh huh. Okay, you want to make a motion?
Well, I do- I'm making a motion to table this. Future meeting-
Yeah.
That's what I'm going to make a motion to do.
Okay.
I make a motion that we table, um- Act, act, you know, it was a consent agenda that was called approval of K-8 school Avid advancement via individual determination program, until we get the information that has been requested by the governing board.
Oh, well, you mean to repeat it, or just-
Consent item S.
Uh huh, and then I just, I, I-
Yes, she made a motion to table consent agenda item S.
I, no, I know that, but then what?
Then I just repeated the approval of the K-8 Avid.
Oh, okay, that's all the time.
Until, and I'll, until we get the information, the governing board has-
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
At this point? So, part of what you had asked for is to get clarification on what the ask is, as well as, so, we've, we've given you the budget, maybe not in a form that you like, so we'll reformat the budget, we'll, we'll give you, we've given you the budget. You have the metrics, you approved the, the metrics that we've given, school-wide, district-wide metrics, those are the things that we are judging schools on, and not adding things to them. Plus, Avid has its own, as, as described here, has, has its own measures of success, some of which is about the Avid program itself. But, so, we have those things that we've told you about, so, what else? Yeah.
Board Member Beckham?
Okay, so, no, just to clarify, that wasn't exactly what I asked for. What I asked for is to each individual school, because the, each school is different. So your objectives might be different at Copper Ridge versus Yavapai and Ho-Ho Comm. So you're going to have the three schools, what the program objectives are, because they're going to be specific to that school. You're probably going to add how many participants, if it's the whole school, how many kids that is, or if it's an elective, how many kids that is per semester, because then we, when we look at that budget for that year, I look at what, how many participants are going to be taking advantage of the program, or going to be affected by that. You're also then going to have measured goals. I've heard two things tonight. I've heard it's to the Continuous Improvement Plan at the school, and then I've heard from Dr. Krieger, it is, no, it's the district metrics. I believe that they are similar, but they can be a little different, in that I would think that Avid, being a, a program, is going, and, and what it does will affect some of those metrics, but maybe not another. So I don't want to guess which one is, is going to be driving how you're going to measure the success of this program, so that you would be saying, you know what, at Copper Ridge, given the demographic and the students that we have, and how many students, if it's school-wide versus elective, that this is, you know, we are going to see if the Continuous Improvement Plan is an increase of X amount, I don't know what that is. I, I can't, I, I can't speak for you, because I'm not in the schools to know what that is. So what I can offer is that, when you have questions tomorrow, call me, and I can say what you're hearing, and how it, how you're going to measure the success, you can say, does this answer your question? And then I can-
We need to be careful of not getting into the how.
I'm not trying to get into it, but because you're not underst- I'm only offering that because it sounds like I'm not being clear. I'm looking for concrete measurements that the school district would be looking at to know that this program is a success.
And using, using the district-wide metrics as a format, schools will be, as they develop their Continuous Improvement Plans for next year, will be looking at their individual data and the metrics, the district-wide metrics, and then picking out of those, those that they want to emphasize and work on to the greatest degree. So we can, we can do that for those three schools. But there's not a difference between the Continuous Improvement Plan and the metrics, they are aligned. So as you know, the district-wide metrics, the Continuous Improvement Plans are developed with the district metrics in mind, so they're using those metrics to determine their success. But we can do that for those three schools.
So getting answers to those questions is realistic. So getting answers to those questions is realistic. Okay. Board member Kravitz, do you think you can tour a school and have that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I make a motion to table, as you did, consent agenda item S, approval of K-8 school Avid advancement via individual determination program to be pulled and discussed separately. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
No. You have to, all opposed.
Oh, did you, did you oppose?
Well, I didn't.
I'm sorry. Board member Greenberg?
No.
Okay. Board member Greenberg says nay. Motion passes to table consent agenda item S, four to one. Okay. Moving on to agenda item eight, our only action item, approval of award of requests for qualifications, RFQ number 19019, for the rebuild, remodel of Cherokee Elementary School. Is there any discussion on action item 8A? Board member Greenberg?
Just very quickly, this is in relation to pre-construction, and what does that mean? That means demolition, and what's the full scope of that?
Pre-construction means the contractor will be working with the district-appointed architect in terms of determining cost estimates for different scenarios. Basically, this feasibility study, whether rebuild, new construction, remodel, and that will be back to the board, those results, on April the 11th. So, the commitment here is the contractor selection, which the committee recommends to you, and only for the purpose of dealing with the pre-construction component, which is priced at point seven, seven tenths of a percentage point.
Thank you.
Board member Beckham?
Thank you. And thank you for your question, because I think that that, it is representative that maybe that our new board members are not fully aware of what a pre-construction phase is in a CMAR. So I think that that does need to be explained. I think one of the easiest way to do that is the scope of work. What will the scope of, what are you asking the CMAR to do in this particular instance?
I can make some general comments. We may need to ask the architect to follow up if you need more information. Generally speaking, the-
No, I'm sorry, I'm not generally, we're asking for a specific approval for Cherokee for CMAR.
Yes.
The district has to be able to know what that scope of work is before we can approve it. So, I don't want general, I want what specifically is the scope of work for this CMAR.
I think the architect in this particular case has different specific plans for rebuild, remodel, whatever scenario you would want to select that made sense to the community input process. And is looking to the contractor to help cost out specifically those different approaches to what the committee desired in terms of Cherokee's project. That basically is the commitment that you're making here with the selection of this contractor. The cost of this is about $130,000, if you look at the general estimate of what construction cost would be at this school. And then, that will give the architect information to bring back to the board on April the 11th, to recommend what to do from a feasibility standpoint. At least you will have the comparative cost information between different alternatives relative to the feasibility study. If you're satisfied with that, then the next step would be for the board to approve a GMP, guaranteed maximum price, that reflects the actual maximum construction cost connected with whatever the board selects as the alternative or the construction scenario. Now, if you need more information than that, then Mr. O'Neill is here for more cut and unsull, and probably can.
Okay. Yes, if you would like to stand up, because I am familiar, because we have approved several of these pre- constructions. So one of the questions, how does this differ from, well, this is probably not for you quite yet. How does this differ from other pre-construction services regarding scope of work?
I think it probably has some flavor of looking at different alternatives that you might not normally pursue, because this district wants to do a feasibility piece of what the respective costs are, different approaches to the scope of construction. That's not typically one that you would see that often. That is, the district already knows what it wants to do. All you're doing is through the pre-construction process, arriving at a guaranteed maximum price, and you either are comfortable with that, or you're not, to move ahead to the next step, which is to sign a construction contract. The difference here is that feasibility study that is also a part of this process.
So then this will go the architect. So, my understanding is this would be a feasibility study in which we, the district, would be utilizing the architect and the construction company to put together the cost for Cherokee to either be 100% rebuilt, or, and to look at it as if it was reconstructed. That's the feasibility portion. That information is that first part. And you really can't do the second part of the pre-construction contract, which is the GMP, until that has been decided. Correct? So, I heard two different things. So, this feasibility study would be available by April 11th, obviously, prior to that, so we'd have time to review. And for that, the fee, I'm hoping it's not the $130,000, just for the feasibility study.
The entire pre-construction scope of work.
Okay.
Is seven tenths of one percentage point of the estimated construction.
Okay. So, but, you had said that on April 11th, we then, depending upon what was chosen, then we would be doing another approval for the pre-construction, for a second one.
You would be doing a second, you would do the second action item to approve a guaranteed maximum price that will be furnished at a later date, based upon the alternative that you select from the feasibility study.
Okay. So, just for clarification, what we've done in the past is that has been the pre-construction contract, is, you know, I understand this feasibility study first. But what we have paid for is that GMP portion. And so, just in Hopi, we paid a fixed fee of $100,000. For Pima, we paid a fixed fee of $60,000. Ho-Ho Com was $90,000. So, I'm confused, why would we be paying $130 for a feasibility study only, and then having to come back and pay additionally for the pre-construction to get the GMP?
No. This is a single pre-construction contract that encompasses not only the feasibility study, but the development of the GMP. Both are combined, both of those different activities are combined within this point seven percent.
Okay. And why did we choose to do a percentage instead of a fixed fee like we have done in the past?
Percentages are fairly typical, I think, because we are uncertain about the exact amount of the budget, depending upon what the feasibility study says. So it seems like it's more appropriate to use a percentage than a dollar amount that would need to theoretically change, based upon whatever number we would estimate the budget to be. So, I think it's industry practice typically, at least my experience has been, it's a percentage rather than a fixed fee.
So, my understanding is the reason that we did it before, and we did a fixed fee, is it was based upon a percentage, it was 0.5% of an estimated cost of the project. And then, it was a fixed fee, because it was the pre-construction, and we wanted to be very specific, because prior to that pre-construction, we do not know what that GMP is going to be. So, once that, what we did in the past is, once it got out of pre-construction, then it went to a percentage, which I thought personally was a lot more equitable for the district and fair. So, I am, I have to, I don't know why, I guess I saw an increase in that percentage, and then, why is it possible to use a fixed fee, so we know exactly what that cost is upfront? Because otherwise, there's a little bit of a conflict of interest. Because when you're making that GMP, if you're going to use a percentage, there is a motivation to, not that you would do it, but to put it a little bit higher. So I just think the perception of that there is some financial incentive, it would be better to have a fixed fee than to actually have it be a percentage of something that the contractor would be determining in the future.
That would mean, then, that you would need to do a specific construction budget.
Well, what we used in the past.
In order to know what, how to compare that to a point seven, as to which one is most advantageous to the district. And that's the number that we have not developed yet. And that's why we're using a point seven. And I would remind you that if the GMP is unacceptable to the owner, the general contractor has to go back with the architect and rework a new GMP. So, I don't think there's a lot of incentive to inflate the GMP, knowing that you might have to come back and redo all of that over again, because the owner says, I don't have the budget to do that. So, I mean, and I think, Madam President, members of the board, it's probably time for me to let the architect, who is a lot more knowledgeable than I, talk about this.
Board President, Governing Board, Dr. Creekard, appreciate being called up here to speak to this. First off, your mention of scope. The contract is very specific in terms of expectations of the contractor through schematic design, design development, and contract documents. Contract documents at the conclusion is where you achieve your guaranteed maximum price. I understand that that percentage, and I didn't work on those other projects, but I understand that percentage was established based on the same percentage of those other projects. And the construction value for this has come up, and that's where the difference may lie. As in the architectural firm, the contractor is offering added value at no extra cost to do a study in schematic design of replace versus renovate. This is really important. And it's a metric amongst others in determining that direction for the Cherokee replacement or renovation. Getting into a renovation, there's a number of things that are very unique. So their skills at understanding what it's like to cut through an eight-inch-thick concrete wall will be very valuable, and the disruption and the phasing and all that good stuff. I did talk to the contractor, and did learn that on one of your previous projects, Pima or Hopi, they determined through this pre-construction services, that metal studs would be more valuable because of the shipping time. Masonry would take more time, and it would impact the re-occupancy of those new schools. So there's some dynamics in these conversations that goes much deeper than just studs versus masonry, that is valuable to the district, input towards phasing, which is valuable to the district and to the user group, too. So, there's a lot that goes into this. It's very methodical, schematic design, design development, contract documents. So there'll be reports coming out of each one of those.
And I am in agreement. I think that the CMAR worked very well for Hopi and Pima, and we saw the advantages of using a value-added contractor, even upfront, but mainly once we were even in the project, is I think where we saw most of, or not most, but a large benefit as well. So I'm not opposed to that at all. I guess what I was, I just wanted to make sure that our two new board members understood what the scope of work was, because it wasn't included in the proposal. And for me to understand what was coming out of this, and I got a little confused, that April 11th was an approval, and then we were going into something else. I also wanted to make sure what we were paying for. As a board member, being a steward of the fiscal dollars for this pre-construction, I would prefer a fixed fee. And then it goes into the percentage. I think it worked very well with the last four contracts. But that's just something that's, I guess, is personal on my part.
Sure.
And, that's all I have to say.
Any further discussion? Could you just speak to the CMAR really quickly for me? We, you know, we've used it before. Board member Beckham had said that it worked well. But I know there are some members of our community that think that we shouldn't be going that direction. Can you tell me, in your experience, why, and why you think it's a value-add for us right now?
Certainly. Early in my career, I did a lot of what's called low-bid projects. And they're just that, low bid. The state came out with alternative delivery methods, some almost 20 years ago, which allows for a construction manager at risk, job order contracting, and slug bidders list. Slug bidders list essentially is hard bid, or low bid, in the sense that for a general, even though he's pre-qualified, to attain that project, he has to take the low subs that may not be qualified, may not be able to finish the job, to get the low number to get the job. CMR is a wonderful working relationship between you, the owner, the contractor, and the architect, collaborating from the very beginning for best value. When you go towards the low bid, or design bid-build scenario, which is used, not very often, but it is used, I use the term no Melvins. I mean, Melvins come along with a low bid contractor. You have subs that, the two big issues I have with that is the subcontracting trades, they're the low, unqualified subcontracting trades, that to get the job, will leave something, as we call it, on the table, so that then they can try and make it up, whether it be through change orders, or through the quality of the work, or through other means. The other piece is, the general contractor is in a whole different state. He wants to get that job done and get out of my way, because when, whether it be a CMAR contractor, or a hard bid contractor, they ensure the site they're working on. They have control over that site. In an operating campus, it's really important to have cooperation between the contractor and the school, so that shifting of utilities, taking down certain buildings, all that good stuff, does not disrupt the educational process. And there's a really nice synergy when you do that with a CMAR contractor. When a hard bid contractor, or a low bid contractor comes onto a site, he's going to take management of that property to his advantage. And there generally isn't the cooperation that you'd see to help make sure the school that's operating continues to operate smoothly. It's their job to get done fast, make some money, and get out of there. So, hard bid is, I can tell you, a lot of stories that our clients would rather not have happened to them through that process. CMR is a very collaborative process, and it's a good process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve action item 8A, the award of requests for qualifications, RFQ number 19019, for the rebuild, remodel of Cherokee Elementary School?
So moved.
Board member Greenberg makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just want to make a statement. Board member Beckham wants to make a statement before the vote.
I just want to, well, I'll say for my vote, when I make it, the only, I'm supportive of this. The only reason that I'm going to vote no is because I don't feel it is in the best interest of the district to have a percentage based upon an unknown number. I think that it should be, we could do what we did last time, which is take the percentage of the estimated cost, which I think in the past was 18 million, and then make it a fixed fee. That's the only reason. So I vote no.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four in favor, all against?
No.
No? Motion passes, four to one. Okay. Moving on to agenda item nine, future items. Do I have any requests for future agenda items from board members? Board member Greenberg?
I have a couple. The first one is, I would like to table a vote to discuss the relationship between the district and the Scottsdale Education Association. The second one is, I would like us, a vote to discuss that, or if my colleagues tonight here, a majority of us agree, would like to see a discussion as well, then just have the discussion, as opposed to a vote on, to discuss, if that makes sense. Does that make sense?
No.
To bring to the board a vote to discuss the relationship between the SCA and our district, or alternatively, to just have that discussion, if my colleagues tonight also ask for that.
So you would like to see it as a discussion item on a future agenda, or you would like to see us have a vote for a future discussion item?
A vote for a future discussion item.
No, we're not.
Not tonight.
Not tonight. I would like us to put it onto an agenda.
Let's call for a vote on a future agenda.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
So it would be, it would be an action item for discussion?
If people want to discuss it, they could just vote no, and that we will never discuss it's, discuss the discussion.
Okay.
Or alternatively, I can just ask for a second time that we bring it for a discussion, but, you know.
And I, excuse me, I do have that on the list, because you had brought it up before. And President Beckman and I have discussed, looking at further in the spring, we're talking about several things that have been brought up, other things such as board meeting structure. meeting structure, times, and so forth, to prepare for next school year so that those discussions would, would take place in the May, June, or, or maybe April. In our discussions, we will discuss it when, bring those up. So we will discuss whether we want to have a vote to discuss so that we can discuss it in an open meeting.
I, I only ask because maybe my other colleagues do not want to discuss it at all, so then rather than waste the time on a discussion, then we avoid that.
Okay.
The, the, the second thing I would like to discuss is perhaps making federal and state election day a district holiday for future, in future years, not for the upcoming, to be clear, not for the upcoming years that have already been scheduled.
We have two, we have two years, we have calendars.
Right.
And there will be probably in the, in the beginning of that second year, there will be a calendar committee. I think our policy calls for a calendar committee and certain guidelines and they would do that and they'd go through that and, and that would be the time to make suggestions from the board. I would hope the calendar committee or whoever is in charge of it, it won't be me, would ask the board for suggestions for the calendar before they, before they started on that process.
Okay, but that isn't something we would put into policy like other districts have?
Well, we could revise policy, we could look at that calendar policy in preparation of that and to see if there are any other changes. Because there are other guidelines in that calendar policy that might want to be looked at. But that would, my suggestion would be you do that in preparation of the committee meeting rather than do it two years prior.
Okay. All right.
But I'll put it on the list.
Any other future items? Okay, moving on to dates of upcoming meetings. Thursday, April 11th, 2019, 3:00 PM, study session at the MDA. Tuesday, April 16th, 2019, 5:00 PM, regular governing board meeting at Coronado High School. Do we have any governing board reports? No. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by board member Perleberg. All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. 7:24.